System still significantly over capacity and holding a number of patients there. We have a significant number of outbreaks in our long-term care facilities and correctional facilities, but the good news is that many of them are not being hospitalized and dying. Vaccinations work to keep you from being hospitalized and dying. We have four clusters we're dealing with, so our team is working with some of our schools, our businesses to deal with those clusters. As you can see, we are continuing to provide testing. Right now, we're at the Brightleaf Flea Market, providing drive-through testing with our partners, OptumServe there. Thank you to Mr. Lee, who's provided that space for us. We're continuing to provide vaccines at our health department, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday and Sunday, our partners providing that over behind the hospital at Rillo. And thank you to our partners and your health department staff. We've given over 66,000 doses of vaccine. There are monoclonal antibodies available for those who are at high risk. The hospital is providing that IV therapy. I did have the number here, just as I put every year, every month there, to see if you're eligible for monoclonal antibody therapy. There's also antiviral therapy. Everything is in limited supply at this point, but for the antiviral therapy, you would have to go through your provider. They would need to evaluate you and write a prescription, and then determine which pharmacies may have it available. So today, I wanted to bring our partners. North Carolina National Guard has been with us for about a year now. They're essentially my employees right now. So they've been with us a long time, and they have been working with us. They started with us in our drive-through clinics. They've done outreach clinics with us. They have provided support for our in-house clinics now. They're part of our EOC team, our emergency operations team. They're working on our outreach, our outbreak and cluster teams, our school team, our business team. They do a lot of our data entry for us. So they have been invaluable to us during this response. We expect that they may be demobilized, demobilized pretty soon, so I wanted to recognize them, their leaders. I didn't bring them all, but I did bring Staff Sergeant Michael Jarrett, Warrant Officer Kyle Cordial, and Second Lieutenant Calvin Willard.
Where's LT at? You need to talk, LT.
Yeah, as he's coming up to talk. I was gonna say, I know that the time I had been by your office and to get my booster and, you know, I've seen him in the drive-through vaccinations and testing, but the time I was in there was amazing that the, how efficient they were. Once you came in that door, you know, they lined you up and marched you right through. So I know they have been a tremendous help to you and to all the folks in Johnston County. So I'd like to thank you on behalf of the other folks you represent for the help you've been to us during this difficult time. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't think I was gonna have to have any words, but I am actually the newest soldier who was brought to Johnston County to help out with the fight of COVID. And since I've been there, also I'm a newly commissioned officer. Been in for going on 14 years, so I've been an NCO, but I've always learned that an NCO is the backbone of the Army. And since I've been there, Staff Sergeant Jarrett, I watch him, and he runs a tight ship. So I do appreciate the recognition. I do count it an honor and a privilege to be there or be here in Johnston County to help fight against COVID, and special thanks to the team. And that's all.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like to add that I also serve on the Board of Health there, and your service has been exemplary, and we really appreciate what you've done for the citizens of this county, not only in North Carolina and our nation, but we're very proud of you and we're thankful for you being in those positions and all your colleagues that have served the people so well. Lives have been saved as a result of your hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lieutenant, there's a couple of old NCOs on this board, so we appreciate your words, too.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
If you need any instructions, see the NCO, David.
Where are you guys from?
I'm with 171 H.G.M. Company in St. Paul.
Okay.
I'm with the 113th St. James Brigade in Greensboro, North Carolina.
I'm with the 1st and 130th Air Reconnaissance out of Raleigh.
Right. Great. Awesome. Good work.
Just want you to know that we do also have some officers on this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now everywhere, you can, you know.
You have any questions?
Dr. Pearson, I do.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you... Yes, sir. The monoclonal antibodies, I know there's certain criteria that have to be met for those, but is there any issue about the availability of it?
There is. It's very limited. I know that for the monoclonal antibody IV therapy that the hospital's providing, they will usually have about 10 doses a day.
Okay.
So it is limited, which is why we ask people to call. They do have strict criteria that they're following to provide that therapy to those who are at highest risk.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Pearson, to get a vaccine at the Health Department, do you have to have an appointment, or is it suggested for appointment?
It's still walk-in right now.
Walk-in?
Yes, sir. As long as we have staff there who can assist us, yes, sir.
Can them guys back there use a needle?
They're not the clinical ones. Although, although some of them have said, "I want to stick somebody." I said, "No, I don't think so."
That's for only those who need it. Any other questions for Dr. Pearson? Dr. Pearson, thank you again for keeping us updated.
Thank you.
And the work you do, thank you. Mr. McLam, you want to update us on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program?
Long time away from home. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
So far, on the ERA program, what we've done so far through January is we've sent out about a little over $6.2 million in assistance for citizens of Johnston County. That bucket, the first bucket, was 6.3 million, so we have only about 48,000 left in that bucket that's left to be paid in a PO2 that we already have encumbered for some folks that need help. We've helped almost 1,500 citizens in the county. We have already spent out in our second bucket around 867,000 in the second bucket. We don't know which bucket we want to pull it from yet. We're trying to, we're evaluating that because there's administrative costs, and those different buckets have levels of administrative costs. And the reason why we're evaluating that is because we have sent out $584,000 in payments to YARDI. So based on the first bucket, we were allowed about 620,000. So we're a little bit under that, but we have used up almost all of that. And there's a, in the second bucket, we're allowed some more administrative costs. We're evaluating that, trying not to spend out of the general fund, but in those administrative costs. From last month, we had 146 cases waiting for supervisory approval, and you know that based on you allowing us to add more YARDI staff, this month, we have only 24 cases waiting for approval. There's 376 still waiting, still in progress, and that's a lot of times that's where we'll need more information from the landlord or the tenant, 155 new cases. So in total, there's about $2.2 million in reviews, in progress and approvals still waiting out there. We spent about 1.3 million, we sent out about 1.3 billion in assistance in January alone. And so in total, we have either we've spent or have waiting to be spent about 8.5 million so far. So it's going well. YARDI's doing well. Credit to staff, both the DSS and our staff in finance reviewing cases, denying cases where there needs to be some denials, or working with citizens to get the approvals and get the information in so that they can get approved and get assistance. That's the Emergency Rental and Utility Assistance, the Mortgage Assistance, which is through CDBG. We have paid out to date a little over 537,000. What we have remaining, minus 10% administrative costs, we have about $272,000 left in that program, so we're on the downside of that, and we expect to have that finished by September. So it's a good program. We're doing well. YARDI's doing what they need to do, along in conjunction with our staff, and we're always evaluating whether we need to ramp up or ramp down the assistance we're receiving from YARDI. So we'll have a recommendation here in the next, you know, 30 days or so on what we need to do with that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mitch McLam? Hello, Mr. Chairman. Is there, do you know of a breakdown between utilities and the rent?
I can get that. I'll get that.
I have one also, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McLam, if you wouldn't mind to sort of go back and just briefly say, where are these, what we refer to as buckets of money? Where does that money originated from? How did we, how did we get that, and how have we dispersed that out?
Right. So the federal government has allowed money to be, to be, it's been sent to the state, and then some of the bigger counties get that allotment to spend for themselves and administer for themselves. Johnston County being a larger county, we have gotten our own allocation. What I call bucket money is ERA 1, which is Emergency Rental Assistance, 1 is directly to the county, and that is about 6.3 million. It's the first, what I call bucket that we have. We have until September, we had until September of this year to spend all that money, and we have met that goal. The second bucket that I call from the federal government is what we call ERA 2, and that's almost 5 million. That is direct payment to Johnston County to help citizens. We've received about 2 million of that 5 million so far, and as I said, we've spent 867,000. There's different reporting requirements to the federal government, so those are the first two buckets. Both of those, the first bucket is we have to spend by September of this year, the second bucket, we get until September of 2025. Then we have two buckets from the state, what we call NC Pro money from the state. It's different reporting requirements, and this is money where we spend for Emergency Rental Assistance to help citizens, where we spend it and then we request reimbursement from the state. Those two buckets are 6.4 million and 5 million respectively. Those, the first bucket of that ERA, of that NC Pro money is due by September 22 as well, and the NC Pro 2 is to be spent by September 2025. So in total, it's about $23.7 million of total assistance that's been allocated to Johnston County. We have been in this a few months, and we've spent right around 6.3. We have 2 more million waiting. Not sure that we're gonna have to spend 23.7 million, but we're gonna do everything we can to spend as much as we need to to help the citizens, so.
So this, this program in its entirety has been funded by the state and federal government?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. McLam.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comments, and first up, we have our Emergency Services Assistant Director Josh Holloman here to recognize some EMS employees.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We appreciate the opportunity to bring in some of our staff.
Oh, no, they're still filing.
Still coming in.
Come on.
Director Hubbard is here with us as well on behalf of him and the entire department. You know, our ladies and gentlemen are out there every day, you know, doing a lot of great work, and it's been a tough time over the last couple of years, as you all know. And so we want to take any chance we can to highlight their great work and great achievements. We recently received a note of gratitude that involved a life saved, and we have Division Chief Dan Gagnon, who's got some details with that, and we'll then tell you about the staff here and what they did. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity and time this morning to be able to recognize our employees for the job that they did. Just to give you a little background of what had happened, it was actually back in December and November of 2020. We have several employees that stand behind me that responded to the aid for a victim that was in cardiac arrest. So routinely, we respond to these calls with a negative outcome, and they get the bad news. They have to deal with this day in and day out. They truly are our soldiers on the front line, and we don't recognize them enough for what they do. And very rarely is it we get the opportunity to speak on behalf of somebody that did have a positive outcome, which resulted in a patient being discharged home. Particularly different about this case was one of our local partners, Dr. Powell. It involved his wife, who went into cardiac arrest, and she was resuscitated by the crew that stands behind me. Very, very low frequency do these positive outcomes occur, so again, we just wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the employees, what an outstanding job that they did. And Dr. Powell, I did request his attendance today. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here. He apologizes for that. He's staying close to home, understandably with the pandemic going on, so he pretty much stays confined to his office, but wanted to make sure we shared this information to the other commissioners. So with that being said, I'd like to recognize a few employees, if you're all okay with that, call them up. First, we have Bailey Keiko, Paramedic Bailey Keiko, who was involved on the call, and they responded actually twice in December and November of 2020. So Bailey Keiko is one of the first responding. Captain Jessica Crawford, if you'll come forward. She is the supervisor that maintains clinical oversight of the call and calls the shots. Keenan Larson, he is one of our community paramedics. Keenan? Sarah Mazingo, Paramedic Sarah Mazingo. And you see a lot of employees before you because we typically will send a supervisor and two EMS units. That's why the number of employees that we have. And I also just want to mention briefly, first responders, the whole collaborative effort of first responders, 911 communications, they all made this possible, and we attribute the outcome to that. Also like to recognize Paul Fuller. If you come forward, Paul. These are the people that made the resuscitation possible, and were able to provide that positive outcome, so they deserve to be commended for that. We wanted to take this opportunity to share that with you guys, and most importantly, for the job they do day in and day out. Most of the time, we go to bed at night, we're curling up in a nice, warm, toasty bed. These guys are going out hitting the ground running 24/7. A lot of times, they don't get the opportunity to sleep. They're up all night. They get off the next morning, we're coming to work, they're going home to take a nap. This happens day in, day out, 24/7 around the clock, so they really deserve the recognition. We appreciate it. Well done.
Bailey wanted to speak. No, I'm kidding. I thought maybe Jessica was gonna speak.
No, we, obviously, it's an honor to be able to serve the people of Johnston County and just use what we have obtained throughout the years and apply it to them. Obviously, we don't ever wish anything bad to happen to people, but it's rewarding to be in the right place at the right time, and to hear a positive outcome for Ms. Powell is just that so little reminder of why we do what we do every day. So thank you.
Yeah, well, I'd just say, I'm thankful for people like you who are willing to do what you do. I do not have a nursing bone in my body, so that I'm so thankful there are people like you who are willing to go out there and help save, literally save lives and make a difference. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like...
Yes, sir.
Night before last, yesterday morning, my wife said, "Did you hear the siren last night at 3:30 in the morning over on Jerry Road?" I said, "No, I got bad hearing. I didn't hear it." And I thought to myself, somebody was out there doing for other people at 3:30 on a Saturday night, Sunday morning. I appreciate what you do.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
Having, having served in your capacity for many, many years, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the professionalism and the level of service that you're providing. I was in this business back when it was very new. We had the first two intermediates in the county, and then we started transitioning toward paramedic, and the progress that you have made over the last 25, 30 years is just phenomenal. And there's so many people that are alive today because of your work and dedication. I'm so proud of each one of you, and I'm thankful that you're here, and thousands of times a day, these people respond all over this state and all over this county. Question real quick, how many EMS calls did you run last year?
Just about 30,000.
30,000 times in Johnston County, these men and women went out and took care of our citizens, and that's unbelievable. So thank you. We appreciate you. And if my address pops up, please come quickly.
Any other comments?
Picture? Sure. Absolutely.
I, if you don't mind, just want to add that we are very grateful for that. However, we could not do our job if it wasn't for y'all and your support and listening to what we need to better serve our citizens. So thank y'all for being there for us, really.
All right. Well, let's get a picture.
Let's get a photo on.
Yeah. Jessica, it took me a minute to recognize.
I'm gonna match you. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. Per.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next up is our Emergency Services Director Kevin Hubbard to discuss a grant opportunity.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, the board. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here this morning and for allowing us to recognize some of the great folks in the division. Captain Crawford actually did a great segue into why I'm here, talking about needs and equipment. We wanted to make the board aware that we're seeking an opportunity to apply for a grant, the Firehouse Subs Grant Program. We'd like to apply for this grant to seek some funds to buy some EMS-specific equipment that will enhance our abilities to safely transport patients. The grant is a non-matching, non-matching grant, does not require specific board approval for the purchase of the grant, and the grant will be in the amount of $18,940.80. And I'm gonna let EMS Division Chief Gagnon explain to you briefly a little bit about the equipment that we'll be purchasing with the grant if we get approved.
Thank you again, gentlemen. Certainly don't want to wear out my welcome. I'll keep it as brief as possible.
You're earning your teeth today. Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity. As Director Hubbard was saying, we're in the process of requesting your approval to apply for the Firehouse Subs Grant. And what this is, we've identified the need through research, and over the past several years and decades, identify the needs of transporting pediatric patients, infants in particular. Back in the day, as you all know, five, 10, 15 years ago, we used to take the infant, when we had a field delivery, put it on mom's chest, and transport to the hospital, and just keep your fingers crossed nothing was gonna happen, no accidents occur. Those days have changed, times have changed, and through research, we've identified that we need to do this in a safe manner. And recently, we had a field delivery which went down in such a manner that we had to dispatch two ambulances, one to transport mom and one to transport the newborn, because we don't have a safety piece of equipment to safely transport that mother skin-to-skin, I'm sorry, transport the infant skin-to-skin contact with mom. One of the things with a newborn baby, it's imperative that they have that skin-to-skin contact at that maternal moment. It goes a long way. And met a little resistance at one of the local facilities by the midwife in labor and delivery, questioning why we didn't transport the infant with the mom. So through research, we identified and selected a piece of equipment that is called the KANGU Pediatric Restraint Device. We currently do not have these. We were able to get one and try it as a demo and train with it. I'm gonna call up Allison Bissett, Captain Allison Bissett, who is one of our training coordinators, and she's here as a subject matter expert. If you happen to have any questions, she can answer. But as what Director Hubbard was saying, this grant opens quarterly. Unfortunately, we just missed the process, which was supposed to close February 16, but they only allow 600 applicants at one time. So they met their quota and took the deadline off, so our intent is to hopefully reapply with the permission of you guys in April when it comes back up. So that's our plan moving forward. We do have information, if you care to see it, on how the device works, but basically what it does is it swaddles the infant up against the mother, safely provides a means of transport, so in the event, God forbid, an accident occurs, we're not gonna have a projectile infant going across the back of the truck, and we all know the implications of that. So this basically provides us a safety means of transportation for the infants, something we really need to take a serious look at and execute a plan for that. So Allison, anything?
I just wanted to say, the device itself actually meets and exceeds the interim guidance that we have through NHTSA, so we know that eventually it's gonna be a mandate, so we want to be ahead of that, if possible, with your support, and hopefully keep these infants safe. Over the past seven years, we have anywhere from 12 to 24 field deliveries a year. So that's babies born pre-hospital, and we would love to be able to keep mom and baby together for transport so they can have that critical time together, but do it in a safe manner.
Sounds like the right plan. Good.
County Manager Mr. Hessler also had the opportunity one day, as he was out visiting, to see the device in action. Chief Gagnon was played the role of...
Had to go there. Had to go there. The sacrifices you make, yeah. I'd just like to say, yeah, thank you again, for one, for looking to improve services to our citizens in Johnston County and looking for non-traditional sources, and thankful for community partners like Firehouse Subs who make these funds available. So with that, any other comments or questions?
Just, just one quick one, Mr. Chairman. When Chief Gagnon first came to Johnston County and I first met him, I had to, I had to listen a little bit because I understand what he was saying.
He still talks funny.
I will say now, all these years later, he sounded more like he's from Johnston County, so. Chief, you've done an extraordinary job, and I appreciate, proud to have had the opportunity to work with you briefly, and I'm thankful for the job you continue to do. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this morning.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to make a motion to address this issue?
Yes, do we need a motion for them to do that? It's consensus. Okay. There's no, there's no money, CSO. Okay. Good question. All right. Next up is our time for our audience members that wish to address the board on items that are not on the agenda to come forward. And if you'll see if there's any in the hall that wish to speak, and we just remind the speakers at all times to maintain proper decorum, make sure the comments are civil in manner, and personal attacks will not be tolerated, and most conversation will be limited to about three minutes. So is there any, anyone out there wishing to make a public comment? If, one more look. All right. If not, Madam Kurt, were there any emails, comments? All right. So the next item on the agenda is presentation of our audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2021. Let's see. And we have Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and Company are going to present the audit report for that, and at the end, the staff will request that we accept the audit, so.
Well, good morning, gentlemen. I'm gonna be jumping from this smaller presentation, so I don't have to flip to that huge book in front of you. The main thing you hire us as a firm to do is to issue an opinion on the financial statements. We issued an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report, and on page one of this presentation summary, all the accounting practices, et cetera, are acceptable. On page two, there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated January 4th, weren't aware that management consulted any outside accountants, et cetera, in terms of findings, issues. There was a new standard out related to changing some types of funds to different types of funds, really, agency funds, collections. So a budget amendment was missed because of that, not a, not a big deal. On the bottom, you see where I'm personally not a big fan of P-cards, though they might work real well. I always stick my two cents worth in there, so I apologize for that. On page three, there were some findings there on compliance testing. I think the whole thing amounted to about $48 or something. The findings are in the bigger report. The next comment there talks about the LGC. If you've been on the board long enough, you might have gotten a letter from the LGC. They're no longer gonna send out those letters. My presentation will serve as, hey, if there's anything there that they'll want a response from. The other thing that I'm sure the finance staff is on top of this, require a significant amount of work for the June 30, '22 audit, is the leases. It's called Gatsby 87, tremendous amount of effort to get that in place. And I'll let Chad deal with that in terms of anything related. Basically, every lease to or from the county has to be accounted for going forward in the financial statements. Somebody's got to read through all of them to determine whether or not they're includeable or not includeable in there. It could be anything, anything over 12 months, so it could be as small as a copier or even a postage machine lease. So it gets to be a headache, and hopefully they'll come to reality here a little bit, and we can get in a better position to not have to deal with some small items.
Tell us how you feel, Alan.
Tell us how you feel, Alan.
I think it's a bunch of crap, but that's the whole thing. Page four. County overall is in really good shape financially. Total fund balance, general funds, 171. Let me back up and say this too, if I may. I'm not in any way trying to say that these are all the key numbers inside the audit report. What we're attempting to do is pull out at least part of the key numbers in the audit report and then put the four previous years' numbers beside it so you get to feel for what's a number may be and have some context or trends associated with it. So, you're not just looking at a fund balance just hanging out there with no real perspective on what was it last year, what, where has it been, et cetera. Same thing with cash, et cetera. So, you can see total fund balance in general fund there, 171 million. If you go back to 2017, in the right column, you can see where it's come from. The unavailable fund balance at 41 million, committed and assigned at 6 million. General fund expenditures, including transfers out, was 245 million. Fund balance available is 52.9. Then you can see revenues over and under expenses before transfers. And the general funds are positive 57 million. The water fund is 779,000. The wastewater treatment plant, positive 6,179,000. The water district operating fund was a minus 1.5 million, and the solid waste was a minus 779,000. You see your total fixed assets there at 451 million, and these are enterprise funds only that do not include general fund, accumulated depreciation of 177 million, and cash of 95 million. Then you can see the cash in your general fund, 153 million. Investment earnings, 49,000. Cash in your school bond fund at 37 million. And you see investment earnings again, cash in your ARBA funds at 20,330,000. Cash in your water fund at 21 million. I'm going to skip the investment earnings, if that's okay. Cash in wastewater funds, 31 million. Water district operating is 30 million. Solid waste is 12, and other governmental is 31 million. And again, other governmental's could be timing issues because of grants, funds, et cetera, and with CARES Act money, ARBA funds, all that can have an impact on timing on some of these cash amounts. Fund balance, again, in your general fund, a million, I mean, 171 million. School bond fund is 37 million. Fund balance in water fund is 44 million. And let me back up and say, you've got a significant amount of money in your ARBA funds, but only a fund balance of five, and that's because the difference is created as a liability until they're, or deferred revenue until they're actually expended. And then the wastewater fund has a fund balance of 83 million. Water district operating fund at 63 million. Solid waste at 9.6, and other governmental's at 31,298. You see the property tax rates there for the five years, collection percentages at 99.8, and collection percentage excluding motor vehicles at 99.77 percent. You see your total property valuation. You see your total levy amount. You can see the increase in both of those over the five-year period shown there. Significant increases in both places. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page five, you can see your debt analysis there, total governmental debt at 331,500,000. Total business-type debt at 176 million. And we talk about this a couple of times, but if you go to the bottom of the page on that 176 million, you can see where the real amount is 118 million. And that's because the way these limited obligation bonds have to be shown in the financial statement, there's a duplicate count. And so, in order to get you a better perspective, from my, just purely my opinion, the net amount of those is 118 million. If you go back up, you can see total debt outstanding is 507 million. You break down your general fund revenues, shows a total of 296 million. And then break down your general fund expenditures, 238 million. If you'd be kind enough to flip over to page six, you can see total fund balance in blue. It's a nice chart. On the bottom, you see fund balance available. This is the, this is the one where there's a general statute that says it must be at least 8.33 percent. So, way above that, we see where it stands in relation to group-weighted average, where if you go back to 17, it's actually below, and now it's significantly above your group-weighted average. On page seven, you can see a pie chart at the top for both cash balances and fund balances. And right underneath that, your total cash balances and fund balances for all funds there. And then on page eight, you can see the collection percentages versus your group-weighted average. And you can see for every year shown, it's above the group-weighted average. And then on page nine, you see school debt as a percentage of total governmental debt, and then school debt as a percentage of total debt there. And it's 86.93 percent of governmental and 64 percent of total debt. And on the bottom of that same page, you see a breakdown of your general fund revenue by percentage, and you see ad valorem taxes at 57.35 percent. That's why we always take a look at what the tax collection percentage is and why earlier we looked at what the total valuation was and total levy amount, because it plays such a big part in revenue. And then finally, on page 10, you see the breakdown by percentage of expenditures, with education being the highest at 32.76 percent, and then public safety at 19.47 percent. And then you see human services and then debt service. And then page 11 shows where there was what I mentioned earlier. The one item you will have to respond to, I think Chad and I have talked about that, is the audit itself was a few days late to the LGC, so Chad will take care of responding to that. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got of me, not just today, but anytime you've got a question. Take the big report home. You read through it. You have fun when you can't sleep. I'm available anytime. Call me. If I'm not in the office, tell them to give you my cell number, and I will get you an answer.
Mr. Gaglin? Mr. Chairman, back to page four.
Yes, sir.
You said something about the investment earnings, but why that stark difference? If you look across the years on that line item, down in the cash versus fund balance, investment earnings, general?
Yes, sir. I'd have to do a little bit of looking, but I'll find you an answer, Mr. Gaglin.
Okay. I mean, those are fairly significant numbers, except for 2021.
Yes, sir. Any additional questions for Mr. Thompson?
I'll just make a comment. That pie chart showing the breakdown of expenditures, that education slice is a pretty big slice. I hope all the citizens see that and understand.
And I guess a question for Mr. McLamb or Mr. Hester. So, this report will be posted where so the citizens can take a look at it? Okay. All right. And I'm sure you said it would be on our website, so. And we do need a motion to accept the audit as presented. Here's a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Greg Walker with Soil and Water Conservation to update us on the funding opportunity to help communities remove debris and other materials that block our streams and worsen flooding. So, Mr. Walker, floor is yours.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you. My purpose to be here this morning is really an update and provide information to you. And I provided to you all before your meeting started a little informational newsletter that was sent to our office last week late, and I thought it summarized the program, state program, very well. So, I thought that would be about as good a document to hand to you this morning as I could put together. This opportunity is called the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. It's a new program. I believe right now it's a one-time funding opportunity. Thirty-eight million dollars has been set aside for stream rehabilitation-type topics, and they are listed here, the priorities and bullets on the newsletter that I have for you. The Soil and Water Conservation Commission is the body that will be, I guess, reviewing these and making awards. Thirty-eight million is a statewide opportunity, so there will be plenty of competition. But our Soil and Water Board is quite interested in making sure that Johnston County has a good step forward and has a good, some good viable projects to compete. So, that is my task, is to pull that together. And there's two things here, the two of the three bullets that I would like to point out to you that we're interested in. The first one, clearing debris or sediment that blocks streams and drainage waste, that is the toughest one. The second one, stabilizing, restoring streams and stream banks, that could apply to us. However, the third one really fits us, Mr. Brazwell, at Moxon Creek, is rehabilitating, improving certain small watershed structures. Believe it or not, Moxon Creek is one of those small watershed structures. It was a canal built in the 60s, and it was, so it's going to fall in that category. But far as putting a grant together for that one, I know it pretty well. I can handle that one pretty easy. But the top bullet, the one about clearing debris, sediment, that one is a toughie. Johnston County's a big place, hundreds and hundreds of miles of streams, and it's really about trees and limbs and things like that. Well, is every tree in the creek a problem? No. How many trees in a certain distance is a problem? Well, that's hard to answer that question, too. How big is the watershed? How big is the floodplain? What are the impacts far as our housing and so forth and around it? So, all those kind of things are difficult to try to come up with. But trying to get around to where we are, I've been at it for a couple of weeks, trying to figure out, looking at map, looking at all the resources we have to try to focus in on how to come up with some good projects. Mr. Gaglin, you came to visit with us a week or so ago, and I appreciate that help. We did get with Kevin Hubbard in emergency services. Time well spent for me. He has got some drone pilots that can help us. That's what we need to be on the ground, looking, you know, looking a little closer. I can see bridges, but I can't see so far. So, that drone opportunity is going to be really valuable. So, I'm working pretty steady right now to try to figure out where to spend our time the best. Tomorrow, our board is meeting, and we're going to have a little update kind of session. If anybody would like to attend, you're certainly welcome to do so. I think I'll have more information by the end of the week than I'll have tomorrow. But I did want to point out a couple of things as I conclude. There is one specification in this money that needs to be mentioned to you. The requirement is that any debris that's pulled out of a stream is going to be pulled out of the 100-year floodplain. Stop a little bit and think about that, Dick. That's a long way potentially out from the stream bank.
Lot of hauling.
The cost could be, could almost double the cost, if not more. So, that makes that 38 million dollars not go near as far. So, we need to really be prudent as the sites we pick. I mean, I can envision as many as 25 or 30 sites, pieces, sections, reaches of a stream. And then if you say I apply for a million dollars and we only get 300, then we've got to figure out where that 300 goes best. So, it's a lot of tough, tough things to think about. And another thing I want to point out is, like I say, as I finish here, I am also looking at a lot of beaver activity in Johnston County. Our streams, Black Creek, Middle Creek, Swift Creek, Little River, have beaver problems. So, if you think about what a beaver dam does, it can stack up water three, four, five, six feet across hundreds and hundreds of feet. So, if you think about blocking stream flow in a flood event, if you already got three, four, five feet of your floodplain already stacked in water where that's flood storage you've already lost. So, you can't really talk about this subject without thinking about beaver. Beaver trapping can be covered in the program. So, then it becomes, landowners, are you willing to get in there with us? So, you know, there's a lot of opportunities, taking a lot of legwork yet. But anyway, we're hard at it, and hopefully we can provide something that's competitive for us in Johnston County. That kind of concludes. Any questions for me?
Mr. Brazel? In this money, as you know, we already have some joint grants we applied with Selma. And I, for one, realize the beaver population in Johnston County is causing us a lot of problems, a lot of destruction, personal woodlands. And as you say, when you, all that water storage, if you've got an area that, in some of these floodplains, you've got a swamp area that's basically flat for thousands of feet, those beavers go in and block it all up, and it fills up more when rain comes, we've got nowhere. So, we're in an immediate flood situation. How many, how much money is available? Do you have a feel for that altogether? I mean, how much could we apply for?
Well, I don't think there's any ceiling on amount any county could apply for. So, you know, I'm thinking over a million, easy. So, we'll be, it'll be very competitive. So, you know, Dick, we'll, I think, to me, if I can identify the best sites we got, be able to document what we have, then I think we will be competitive. But Dick, don't get confused, the Moxon Creek, we got that study coming in front, our preliminary engineering work, that's going to be in front of hopefully any kind of funds we get, you know, with Selma, kind of Selma as well. But I think the timing is going to be pretty, pretty good on that.
They come and use that same study for two bottles of money?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
The impression I got last week at our meeting is that our, we need to have our act together. We need to have the projects identified specifically, the benefit, how many people are impacted by that. And I think if we put all that and dot your i's and cross your t's, we'll have a good shot at it.
I'll be getting with Kevin probably tomorrow afternoon and trying to figure out where we're going to start flying and looking and that kind of thing.
You know, this is the kind of thing, Mr. Chairman, that we rarely think of. It's not a big deal. If you go ask people about what do you think of soil and water in Johnston County, it's not an issue until it becomes an issue.
It is an issue.
Yes. Yeah. And I appreciate what these guys do.
All right. Mr. Walker, what is the deadline for the application?
31 March.
31 March. Okay. So, you've got a lot of, lot of ground to cover.
I've got some time, but I mean, I can't sit around.
Yeah. You've got a lot of ground to cover, right?
Absolutely.
Literally.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
All right. Next up is Ms. Shandra Farmer, our Public Works Director, to talk to us about sole-source requests.
Yes. Back in 2020, the board approved, based on our engineers' recommendation and staff request, allowed the county to sole-source several components for our new wastewater treatment plant. And what we're requesting is to include that same approval so we can sole-source chemical metering pumps at our existing plant. The previous approved request allowed the county to sole-source Blue White Industries Limited as the approved manufacturer for these chemical metering pumps at the new plant. We're requesting the same at the existing plant, as we have some existing chemical pumps that need to be replaced. But this will allow for, allow us to maintain our standardization, compatibility and consistency for operation and maintenance. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Make a motion. Do we approve this?
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Farmer, I think you have the next item up, too, is work change directives.
Yes. As the board is aware, the Department of Utilities, we have multiple water and sewer capital projects under construction right now, and as we do at any time. These projects are typically approved in our, they're part of our capital improvements plan, and they are all approved by the Board of Commissioners, the construction contract awards approved by the board, as well as the budget for each project. And during construction, as you know, it's not unusual to encounter changes that need to be made to projects. It might be adding something, it might be deleting something, and it could affect the contract time and the contract cost. There is a formal process to document this and to approve this by change order in our construction contracts. And that change order is usually assembled by staff and approved by our county manager. Our standard conditions of our contracts, however, also allow for the owner to issue what's called a work change directive to the contractor. This would allow, typically would be done at a staff level, and it allows the county to say, okay, these are the changes we want to make, these are field changes, we understand this is the estimated pricing, and we are going to sign this statement saying we are going to incorporate this into a future change order. That change order is what formally changes the contract documents and the contract amount. However, that work change directive assures that we're going to proceed with that. And we're requesting that the board approve this to allow the Director of Utilities to execute this work change directive until this is, until a formal change order is provided and executed by the county manager. The request would be that we cannot, staff cannot approve a work change directive that exceeds the already-approved project capital budget. We wouldn't be able to do that without, of course, approval from the Board of Commissioners.
Shandra, I think...
Shad, I think we talked about potentially be some, since we are responsible for approving the contract and the budget in the first place, that there be, I'm all for you having this authority, but I think there should be some reporting requirement.
Right. And I think I provided, I sent that this month. Monthly, what we're planning to do, if this is acceptable, monthly, we would give a report with all of the change orders that are issued for that month.
All change orders and work directives?
We could, yes.
The work directive would be incorporated to future.
Right. That work directive's gonna go into a future change order. And we could do monthly for all of our capital projects. There were two for January.
Okay. So that has been sent out, you said?
I had provided that previously to.
It was, yeah, it was, I think it was with the water and sewer allocation, a reconciliation, rather.
In fact, it could be part of the agenda package. That would be great.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What's driving this? What will this do that we don't do now?
We are at the point now where many of our contracts are larger in value than what we've had in the past. And also contractors are faced with limited materials and supplies. And we verbally have told contractors, okay, this is what we're gonna do.
I got you.
And when we do that at staff and at department level, it still could take a month or more to get that formal change order approved by the county manager. So this gives us that formal assurance, gives the contractor that assurance as well.
Okay. Good. So in turn, that lessens the time that we have to negotiate a change order, thus potentially saving money because of delays to the contractor in getting work moving on?
It could, that's right. So the contractor doesn't have to wait for that formal signed change order. They at least know it's coming and that we've said we're gonna incorporate it.
Yeah. Documents things a little closer.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this authority?
I second it.
All right. We have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Next on the agenda is appointments. And I think each of you, the board members have ballots at your seats. And it's kind of become customary where we have more applicants than we have positions. We have gone to a ballot system where we will vote this morning, and we will announce the results at our evening meeting. But the boards we have openings on, the Health Board has one position open for the general public, and we have four applicants for consideration on that. The Planning Board has four positions open. We have seven applicants for that. And our Johnson Lee Harnett Board has one position open, and we have two applicants for that. So at the end of the meeting, we'll give everything to the clerk. And again, we'll announce that at our 6 o'clock meeting at the beginning of that. So, and now we have Ms. Andrews up for our delinquent tax collection report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before you, you have the December collections report. As you can see, we had a strong month in the month of December. We were up 6.3 percent over the same period last year. I have seen the numbers for the first five days, which would have ended the timely collection period. And it ended strong as well. In fact, just even a little stronger than this. So staff did a great job in ending out that period strong. And we have also, as many of you are aware, or probably all of you are aware, just finished our timely listing period for people to submit their listing forms. And that has proved to also be a very busy time in the tax office. I'll be happy to take any questions at this point.
I noticed in our audit that our graph was above the state average. So that's good work on your part and good work on our citizens' part.
Yes, very much so. Yes, if we couldn't, if they didn't do their part, we couldn't keep up.
Yeah.
It's a struggle now. And we're very thankful that, you know, like I said, that our citizens are doing what they know they need to do to help support the county.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Andrews? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is manager reports and comments. All right. Thanks for that, Mr. Hester. Then we have board reports and comments. I'll start at my left, Mr. Brazel, anything? Commissioner Godwin?
I don't have this time.
All right. Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Other Commissioner Brazel? Mr. Smith, any comments?
No, sir.
All right. I have a couple of things. First is, we issued a letter of support for an economic development good jobs grant on February the, before February the 1st. And I'm just gonna kind of read through what that was about and hope I can do that without messing it up. But the county was contacted by Joy Callahan on behalf of the Economic Development Office on January 24th regarding the need for a letter of support for a U.S. EDA good jobs grant that she was working on with the Durham and Wake Counties, in which Triangle J Cobb will be the primary applicant. This will support the Coalition of Stakeholders working to develop, design, and implement the Triangle Region Advancing Careers and Equity Project to assist with the region's most underserved populations into sustainable and good-paying jobs. The letter was needed by February 1st, and there was no matching funds required. And I believe you all have a copy of that letter at your desk, and I'm sure there's one available for the public to review. The only other thing I had is to, I guess, formally announce is we will be, the board will be having a strategic planning retreat March 17th and 18th. I think that's the Thursday and Friday. We are working out the details on the location and the actual times, timing of that. But it's one of the things, as Chairman, I think is critical that this board do. We've, we've had other types of meetings and planning meetings before, but this will be a chance for us to come together and set our vision for the county. We'll look at goals and objectives, and that's for several reasons. One is for us to know as we, as cases come up and items come up for us, that we will have set those goals, and we will know that when something comes up, which may seem like the hottest topic of the day, and in fact, we've decided, you know, at our planning session, that we, we have priorities which either are above or below that, so we can focus on those. The other thing, it'll help staff for those same reasons. I mean, staff gets pulled in many directions all the time, so it's also to provide, you know, some guide rails for them. And the other thing is for the public, that they will know, you know, what our, what our vision is and what our goals and priorities are for this county, so that they can know, you know, they can hold us accountable for either we're meeting those goals and objectives or not. So it provides a roadmap for all of us. And with all the stuff that we have going on in Johnston County, I think this board feels it's critical that we set that roadmap and give us a direction on where we, we want to go. So any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to hear that we're planning that because we, we're set, we're time constrained a lot of times in our meetings, and we don't get a chance to really discuss things that are out of the parameters of what our agenda is. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to get together and, and create a vision and discuss the things that we want to do, how we want to move forward. We've got a lot of stuff on our plate. We need to be able to discuss everything in detail, just to give us a chance. We have a specific purpose to do this. So I think it's a great idea. I'm looking forward to it.
All right. I think we, we have been in discussions with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to be the facilitator for that strategic planning session. So we'll continue to have those discussions, and we'll update as, as things are solidified. With that, I think there's a need for.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, board go into closed session for purposes of consulting with attorney employed by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privileges pursuant to NCGS 143 318 11A 3, to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area pursuant to NCGS 143 318 11A 4, and to establish or instruct staff concerning negotiations, the pricing terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property pursuant to NCGS 143 318 11A 5, and for the purpose of personnel pursuit to NCGS 143 318 11A 6.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.